Good morning. The February 10th, 2022 meeting of the Alabama State Board of Education will now come to order. Pastor Frank Bowling, pastor of Eastmont Baptist Church located in Montgomery, Alabama, will now offer the invocation.
Thank you for your invitation. Let's pray together. Eternal Father, we thank you for the blessing of children, the heritage of a great state of Alabama, and the great stewardship you've given to this board and to many of those assembled together in this place. Today I pray as students are enamored with the beauty of art and literature, as they are confronted with timeless truths in math and exploration of science, as they embrace the humanities and even gaze into the stars. I pray that all would be done in such a way as to provide them with wonder, with insight, with a depth of their experience of being that is unparalleled. And so we thank you for educators. Thank you for those in administration, and those that work in cafeterias, and those that clean the floors, those that work in crosswalks, and ladies and gentlemen like these who lead from a position of a governing board. We pray today for wisdom, that we would set aside personal agendas and preferences and human ideals, and draw from the collective experiences of this group guided by your Holy Spirit that decisions made would be right and pleasing and good for human flourishing in the lives of students and families. And that you would continue to grant these ladies and gentlemen wisdom, and where there is correction needed, God then correct, and where there is encouragement and courage, where there is weakness, provide strength. That all that is decided and discussed today would honor the great name of Jesus, by whom, through whom, and for whom all things were created and have their being. So God grant this board wisdom and joy as they conduct the responsibilities entrusted to them by the state of Alabama. These things I pray in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Bowling. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States Flag. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Thornton, please call the roll.
Yes ma'am. Mrs. Bell?
Present.
Dr. Chestnut?
Present.
Governor Ivy? Dr. McCarty?
Present.
Mrs. McRae?
Present.
Dr. Reynolds?
Present.
Dr. Richardson?
Present.
Mrs. West?
Here.
Mrs. Ziegler?
Here.
Mrs. Thornton, is there a quorum?
Yes, we have a quorum.
D, approval of agenda. We will now consider a motion to approve the agenda of the February 10th, 2022 meeting of the Alabama State Board of Education. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed by like sign.
Unanimous vote.
E, approval of the minutes for January 13th, 2022. We will now consider a motion to approve the minutes from the January 13th, 2022 meeting of the Alabama State Board of Education. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed, like sign. Thank you.
Unanimous vote.
F, public hearings. Mrs. Thornton, has anyone signed up to speak today?
No ma'am, there's no public speakers.
Thank you. G, action items. One unfinished business. Mrs. Thornton, is there any unfinished business?
No unfinished business.
Thank you. G2, new business. 2A, resolution and recognition of Camilla Duarte, Tuscaloosa Magnet School Elementary, Tuscaloosa City School System, 2022 Elementary Best of Show State Superintendent's Visual Arts Exhibit. We will now consider resolution recognizing Ms. Camilla Duarte, who is from Tuscaloosa Magnet Elementary School, which is located in Tuscaloosa City School System, which happens to be in District 4, which is my district. She is being honored as the 2022 Elementary Best of Show State Superintendent's Visual Arts Exhibit. Do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote.
Congratulations, Camilla. In absentia, she'll be here next month, but still, that's a great honor. 2B, we will now consider resolution recognizing Ms. Emily Restad, who is from Pike Road High School, which is located in the Pike Road City School System, as the 2022 Secondary Best of Show State Superintendent's Visual Arts Exhibit. Do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed, like sign.
Unanimous vote.
All right, congratulations, Emily. Is Emily here? If not, let's recognize her anyway. 2C, we will now consider a resolution to recognize all the other contestants for the 2022 Annual State Superintendent's Visual Art Exhibit. Do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed, like sign.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. 2D, we will now consider a resolution to recognize March 2022 as Arts Education Month in Alabama's schools. Do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed, like sign.
Unanimous vote.
E, we will now consider a resolution to recognize March 7th through 11th, 2022 as School Breakfast Week in Alabama's schools. Do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed?
Unanimous vote.
2F, we will now consider a resolution to recognize February 7th through 11th, 2022 as National School Counseling Week. Do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed, like sign.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. 2G, we will now consider resolution to authorize review of an educator preparation program for Birmingham Southern College. Do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed?
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. 2H, we will now consider a resolution to approve an educator preparation program for Jacksonville State University. Do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed?
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. 2I, we will now consider a resolution to approve the recommendations of the State Textbook Committee for Adoption of Textbooks for English Language Arts, grades 4 through 12. Do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution? Any discussion? All those in favor show by raised hand. Opposed?
Abstained.
Vote cares.
All right. 2J, we will now consider a resolution to take no action on the recommendations of the State Textbook Committee for Adoption of Textbooks for English Language Arts, grades K through 3. Do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor show by raised hand. Opposed?
Abstained.
Okay, thank you.
Vote cares.
Yes.
It may be helpful for those who are in the audience today who are not aware of why we're doing this.
Yes, okay, just, okay.
Yes ma'am, thank you. So this, what does votes, the first vote, we bifurcated the process on the English Language Arts textbooks after some discussion looking at this for over a month. The board, many board members, can't speak for individuals, but were uncomfortable that the K3 recommendation, there was only one product, one vendor, that made all of the cuts, and there's a multiple layered system. And when we got to the end of the system, they really hated saying there would only be one option out there. So what we've done, there are multiple options for 4 through 12, as the board has approved. For K3, what the board has voted to do is to not reject the one that made it, which means that if it's rejected, there are some implications in what local school boards can and can't do. So it's not rejected, but it's also not approved. With the further statement that's in the resolution, that what the board's calling for are a couple of things. One is either local school boards can go through a local selection process, and we will help them in that selection process, it's laid out in law how they can do that. And they would use the recommendation of the Literacy Task Force that we sent out in a memo last July. There were two, not one option, but two options on that. So local boards could buy from, use state funds to buy from either one of those two vendors as recommended by the Literacy Task Force, or they can wait until we can re-RFP the process, which we would not likely do for some time because the textbook law itself, which is a little bit of the problem now, but the legislature, the state senate yesterday moved forward a new bill that would fix one of the problems that we have there. So if it passes, then we could wait till after it's made into law, and we could rebid it, or we could wait until next year and rebid. So either there will be a rebid process, or local school boards can use their own process, use state dollars. There are other processes they can use too, they can use federal dollars or local dollars to purchase the textbooks for K3. For 412, the whole suite of those recommended by the textbook committee is now considered approved, and local districts can purchase those using state funds. Are there any questions? Is that enough?
Enough discussions, okay.
I'd like to make a comment. Go ahead, I'll defer to my distinguished lady from District 1.
No, we cannot, okay.
I'm sorry.
Jane, so we normally don't allow people in the audience to ask questions. So we can, we're not supposed to, but after the meeting, I'll get your question.
I will respond to this. This is a longstanding incongruency between the Literacy Task Force and our textbook committee. And this is a legislative governance. This is not the state board's decision. We're subject to the governance of the state board, and they set the rules and the regulations on which we can spend state money. And I'm very pleased that the input I got that the legislature is going to correct this issue. But this issue, as many others that the state board deals with, also has to reconcile itself with legislative actions. And if you look at what's happening in our legislature this year, there are a number of legislative actions directed at public education. And this is one issue that's, this is not a new discrepancy, this is an issue, this is a discrepancy that exists for years. And hopefully, our legislature will correct this problem for us, and we won't have this in the future. That's why I abstained on both those issues.
Thank you, and sorry for that. If it had been under public hearings, we could have heard you, so I apologize. Okay, thank you. All right, any more discussion? I think we already voted. Thank you. All right. 2K, we will now consider adopting new Alabama Administrative Code Rule 290-1-1-15 pertaining to electronic signatures and records policy. Do I hear a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes.
Now ma'am, chair. May we also have an explanation?
Yes. Right, under discussion, yes, that's fine.
Thank you very much, yes ma'am. So this is a change in the code that allows us to use essentially DocuSign to do state documents. And it allows, so the good thing for this for us, a lot of the paperwork we have now that slows things down, we have to do MOAs with local districts, they have to, so we have to mail it to them physically, several people at the district sign it, they mail it back to us, we have to sign it, then it has to go for other signatures outside the department, so that whole process can take days to weeks, whereas with electronic signatures, we'll be able to do those transactions in a day.
Anything else?
I just wanted to add that the board has already discussed this in a work session, but some may not have attended the work session, so hopefully it's for the benefit of the audience, but we have actually reviewed it.
Thank you. All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed, like sign. Thank you.
Unanimous vote.
2L, we will now consider an intent to adopt amended Alabama Administrative Code Rule 290-2-2-01 pertaining to school facilities, approval of construction as a permanent rule. Do I hear a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is it, okay. Any discussion? Would you also discuss that?
Yeah, thank you. Let me, so as Mrs. Bell pointed out, sometimes if you're a member of the audience and you don't follow these things, we spend a lot of time talking about these things before they come to the board for a vote. This one has to do with a change in the law last year, the legislature made, the governor signed, and it changes bid requirements for the building of school buildings, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say building, changes the permit requirements, not bid requirements for school buildings. So essentially, under the old law, any change in a school facility, if you built a new concession standard softball field, all had to come through the State Department of Construction Management. Under the new law, projects that cost less than $500,000, or projects that deal solely with replacing roofs, replacing or repairing roofs, or replacing or repairing HVAC systems, those three categories do not have to go through the Division of Construction Management, which is in the Department of Finance over in the Capitol. So local boards can choose to use the Division of Construction Management, or they can use to, choose to use their own architect to do those jobs. It caused us, because we're the pass-through agencies, the department, so they technically, they're submitted to us, and then we submit them to Construction Management. So this updates the rules to say that local school boards that want to choose not to submit projects up to $500,000, roofing or HVAC, do not have to submit those to Construction Management. They do still have to register those with us, and we still have to approve their contracts. So when they go out and they get a construction company, and that process is in place to make sure they don't have, you know, they don't just hire somebody that doesn't have a license and that sort of thing. But the, but the whole permit process and the inspection process for those smaller projects and for HVAC and roofing projects would no longer be required. There are some forms they have to fill out, and essentially, the forms are, they sign an affidavit saying that they recognize they're waiving the state requirement, the state permitting and inspection process, and they are accepting that as a local board of education. So the superintendent, the local school board, plus whoever they choose as an architect or a construction company, they have to sign affidavits saying they are assuming that liability that used to be assumed by the state, because the state had to approve the plans, and the state provided final inspection and occupancy certificates for those buildings. So now, if local boards do that on their own, they have to sign an affidavit saying they realize they are assuming all that liability, not the state.
And this is the result of the legislature passing a law, and we are adding it to our administrative code, which is required by law.
Yeah, we really don't have a, I mean, I don't want to say you don't have a choice, but essentially, the law, the legislature changed the law, we're just updating the administrative procedures to match what the law now says. So that is something, yes, the legislature passed all of that that I just described into law last year, but made it effective February this month of 2022.
All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed?
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. 2M, we will now consider adopting amended Alabama Administrative Code Rule 290-2-2.01ER pertaining to school facilities, approval of construction as an emergency rule. Do I hear a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
You want to discuss? So this is the same rule we just did. But the reason we do it as an emergency rule, that means it goes into effect today with the board's vote, and remember, the legislation said it should go into effect in February of 2022. So it makes it immediate, the emergency rule only lasts for six months. The first, what the board just voted on is not adopting the rule, but announcing its intent to adopt the rule 45 days from now, and they're 45 days from public comment, and the board will come back, assuming, based on the comment, but assuming there's not much, in two months and vote to make the previous rule a permanent rule. And so this is a vote to make it effective today for six months on an emergency rule.
And Dr. Mackey, to clarify, this is another case where the legislature and the governance of the state board overlap. And whether we adopt this rule or not, it's in the state code of Alabama, so it's another case where we perhaps can better coordinate our actions with the state, with the legislature. But we, it's a rule already whether we adopt it or not, but we're adopting a temporary rule so that the state board's regulations are in concurrence with a state legislature. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed?
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. H, executive, Dr. Mackey, do you have any public or legal information to share?
Yeah, yes ma'am, we have one announcement required by law. The Pickens County Board of Education unfortunately last year lost a member to death. The law provides that the remaining board members, and therefore them, can choose a person to sit in that chair. The Pickens County board members, the four of them, were unable to arrive at a conclusive nomination. And so they notified us in January that they wanted us to take over that process. And that, so the law then says the state superintendent chooses somebody. What I did, I took all the people who had applied for the job to the board, looked at their resumes, went through them, and selected Dr. John E. Brandon from Gordo, Alabama. So Dr. Brandon has already assumed that role, and he will serve out the term of Mrs. Debbie Holly, and then he'll have to run for election if he wants to continue to serve. So that, so he is already sworn in as a Pickens County board member, but we are required to read that into the minutes.
Thank you, Dr. Mackey. I, Dr. Mackey, do you have a superintendent's report?
Yes ma'am, I do, thank you. So I'm going to make just a couple of comments, and then we're going to turn it over to some students. We have some students with us today, and I know that you all are as anxious to come on, come on and get through your comments so we can get to the students. But just a few things I do want to mention. So first of all, I want to say thank you for the first four things you approved today, which all had to do with arts. Now those students are not with us, but they will be next month. So next month, on the day before the March board meeting, we will have a very special reception that Andy Meadows, Mr. Meadows, in the back, stand up Andy, so they can see you, if some board members might not know you. Andy's our state arts specialist, and has been putting together a great program, and we're very excited about it. So it's going to be out at Shakespeare Park the day before the board meeting, and we will have those, we'll have the two winners that you have acknowledged this morning, plus we'll invite those other winners whose art is on display in the Capitol, and we're very excited about bringing that back, because for a couple of years, that's been on hiatus. So he's been working really hard to put something very nice together, we're excited about it, so we all want you to come in a day early and join us for that event. But it is also Arts in the Schools Month, so it's not just about the visual arts show. You all remember last month, I told you we had to cancel the music performances for February. He has rescheduled those, so now we're going into March, into April, March and April, but they, we will be doing that. So also next month, when you're here, there will be a very special performance upstairs in the rotunda, and we'll, we'll work our meeting around and make sure we can be up there for that musical performance. They're going to be doing every Thursday in March and April, is there one we skipped? But it's pretty much every Thursday in March and April. So we'll give you the schedule, and especially, you look at it, and there may be somebody in your area you want to come down for, they'll be singing over here, and then singing in the Capitol Rotunda, and extremely excited about bringing that back. We will have the visual arts show, if you can go over right now into the old Supreme Court Library, and all of those art exhibits are on display. People, lobbyists have been asking me about it, because they're walking through and seeing those, and some of them have asked me how can they purchase them? And so, I, Mr. Meadows, I've said, well, you have to purchase them from students, we don't sell their artwork. But, but I'm serious, some of them have asked me about how they can purchase some of those pieces. So it's just really good to bring all of that back. We will have some time later this afternoon, even if some of you can stay around, you want to walk over there and see some of those, but if not this, today, then another day or next month, please go see those artist exhibits before they are taken off exhibit. I want to let you speak, and I'm going to let you introduce the folks who are with you, because we have, I know we have Elliot, and we have some other arts folks with us, I'm not sure who all's in the room, so, Mr. Meadows, you want to?
Well, I'd just like to say that currently, the secondary exhibit is up, the Rotunda of the Capitol, over to Washington Magnet High School Art Honor Society came and helped us hang that show. That show will come down on the first of March, and we will hang the elementary show. And we talked to high schools, going to bring some students to help us with that work as well. Today, we're going to be having Randy Foster, who is the executive director of the Alabama Institute for Education and the Arts, one of our partnering organizations. Elliot and I, who is the executive director of the Alabama State Council on the Arts, who we also do a lot of partnerships with, with the arts and arts and education. And then Donna Russell, who is the executive director of the Alabama Alliance for Arts Education. So Randy Foster helps us out with Capitol schools, coordinating that, Donna Russell helps us out with the Capitol, I mean, with the art show itself, scheduling the Shakespeare Festival, things like that. So they're great partners, and that's why we're here for the Arts in our Schools Month.
I'd ask them to stand so we could recognize them, please.
Yeah. Super. They all do great works, wonderful partners, and it just is so good to see these things coming back. So, so since one's coming down today, we are coming down February, or at the end of this month, if you don't think you'll be back in Montgomery, we'll try to find time to end of the day for you to go over there and, and see the secondary show. So the other thing I want to recognize, we do have a dean with us today, Dean Kimberly White from Jacksonville State, who's, you've approved one of her programs this morning, Dean White, we're glad to have you at a board meeting again. We have representatives also from Spring Hill and AUM, I know, I know Spring Hill's going to be with us at least later in the day, but I'm going to ask all of our higher ed partners who are with us if they would stand, and they may all be able to stay. So I have one more thing before I turn it over to Jimmy Hall and our, our students because it is Career Tech Month. So we passed a resolution to that effect last month, but this is the month, so he's got some students with him, and I'm going to turn it over to him. But I cannot pass up the opportunity to say that a wonderful, wonderful lady, this will be our last board meeting, and she has given a great deal to this department and this state. She is one of the most courageous and smart and committed people I've ever known in my life. She has been here since November of 1973, and Dr. Jane Meyer will be retiring before our next board meeting, and I'd like to recognize Dr. Jane Meyer.
She's way too young to She's way too young to quit.
She, she is working until the last minute. I'm telling you what. She's working me walking down the, walking down the stairs together to come to the meeting this morning. She's giving me assignments. So we really appreciate Dr. Meyer and the work she's done in teacher, leading teacher certification in this state for all of those years. And with that, Dr. Hall, may I bring you up and let you introduce our students in Career Tech Month and our celebration? Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Mackey. Thank you, board. It's always a pleasure to have a chance to present to you. We've been able to show you some really great CTE things lately. And we're excited because it's CTE Month. And so I want to take just a minute and thank the CTE staff here at the department, as well as our CTE educators and students across the state for all the work that they do. The staff here in the department is just outstanding. They impress me every day with their, their passion and dedication to improving CTE for the students of the state. And so that's a great thing that we should be proud of. We're having a great CTE Month. A lot of great things going on, resolutions across the state and different civic organizations. A lot of great programs. There's been a, I've seen a lot of good news stories popping up across the state. So just a lot of wonderful things going on that we're really proud of. We've got a short video I want to show you real quick, it's about 50 seconds long. These are part of a series of videos that we've put out through the department and the stakeholders across the state, announcing Career Tech Month and just providing some good information to help improve awareness and perception about what we do in Career Tech. So Charles, if you could, let's start that video.
Happy CTE Month. We are celebrating career technical education throughout the month of February because CTE works.
Eighty-seven percent of Alabama high school students are taking a CTE class. And 94% of those students graduate.
Not only that, they're more likely to enroll in a two- or four-year college.
Students in career and technical education are also more employable.
Meaning, if you want to get a job or make more money than your peers, you are more likely to by joining one of our amazing organizations.
You don't have to just join one organization. You can join multiple. For more information, go to alabamascts.org.
So again, that's just one of a series of seven videos that range from a minute to two minutes. And I think what I'll do is make sure that we get all seven of those to you if you haven't been seeing those, so you can have access to that library. But they're really strong. We're getting a lot of great response on them as we've sent them out across the state. You know, one thing I want to say is that, you know, through the pandemic, you know, there's been a lot of struggle and a lot of, a lot of interruptions and a lot of disruptions. These students that we have that are seniors, their last uninterrupted or non-disrupted school year was their freshman year. And so, but what we've seen in Career Tech is this attitude of the work goes on. We keep pushing forward. And the work that the students, like you saw on the video, and like the students we're going to show you today, and the teachers across the state in CTE, the work they keep doing is just inspiring. They continue to work hard. They're dedicated to, to their CTSOs. They're dedicated to their programs. And they've seen opportunities in Career Tech through the pandemic to apply the things they're learning in their programs. And that's what we're going to show you some today. Before I get in, before I pass it off to Laura Bailey and our health science groups, I did want to mention, we have a middle grades CTE grant that went out recently. And I just want to give you some quick information on that. And you can see the slide there. But you, and you can see the numbers around the workforce region, the dollars that have gone out. We're very proud of this grant. We, it was, it was a significant project. Dawn Morrison was very helpful in keeping that or implementing the project and seeing it through. We are planning a round two very soon that will go across the state just the same. And we're hoping to continue to see. One of the initiatives that we're really working on is improving and growing CTE in our middle grades. We think that's very important, and that's something that we're working really hard to do. And this is just one piece of that. Can we see the next slide, please, Charles? This is a list of the school systems that have, that have been awarded so far. Again, we're going to do a round two, so we're excited to continue to grow that. We have work-based learning grants that will be coming out very soon that will allow us to extend co-op through the summer months and allow opportunities for students that don't normally get to experience cooperative education or work-based learning, opportunities to do that through summer months when their schedules will allow them to be able to work a little bit better. We also are developing a drone and cyber technology grant for JROTC programs across the state. So that, again, will be, that's very innovative and something that we're very excited about. Craig Collins is helping us lead that. Two updates on some topics that we've been talking about for a couple of months. Been working with Nick Moore, who's a great partner. We get a lot of good things done together. We worked with him on, working on the gap analysis related to CTE programming and the in-demand jobs and seeing where we had gaps. And our initial analysis shows us that every CTE program in the state in K-12 is aligned with at least one in-demand job. In most cases, it's multiple in-demand jobs. So that is great news in terms of the programming we are providing. Now, the next step is to find where we need more programming in high in-demand jobs, where there's really big demand. We need to make sure we have enough programming for those. So, but we've got an initial very positive report on that. And we've been talking about a survey for, perception survey related around facilities and salaries for CTE educators in our CTE facilities. We, that will close at the end of the week, and we'll have a report ready very soon to share with you about what that, what the survey is telling us. And we're working with a research company to build off of that and create some additional recommendations and some plans that we can use to help address that. So again, I appreciate the time. At this time, I'm going to hand it over to Laura Bailey. We've got a couple of great programs that we're going to spotlight. And then we have got an awesome little bit of entertainment to wrap up our show today. But we love CTE. We appreciate your support. CTE Month is very important to us. It's a great time for us to celebrate all the great things that are going on in Career Tech across the state. It's important for all of our students to be involved in Career Tech in some way. Every student that graduates is going to end up in a career. At least, that's our goal. And CTE can help us get that way, get to that place. So, thank you. Laura?
Dr. Mackey, board members, it is my pleasure to introduce a unique partnership with our health science programs that we have with a major medical provider in Lee County. The Earn and Learn Program at East Alabama Health in Opelika began in 2007 when an Auburn high school student became the first health science student to be hired in the emergency department as a nurse tech. Within just one year, a private grant was secured that funded the employment of 10 high school students for a semester. In 2016, the number of participating students was increased to 20. This year, due to the critical shortage of nurse techs, the program offered jobs to 18 applicants from Auburn, Beauregard, and Opelika high schools. Students employed in the Earn and Learn Program are high school seniors, enrolled in a health science program, have earned a nationally recognized credential, work 20 hours a week, making $10 an hour for 90 days, and then are considered for full and part-time employment with higher pay. Today, I would like to introduce you to three Earn and Learn students. Laura Lee Farmer, a senior from Auburn High School. Zoe Dollar, a senior at Beauregard High School. And Logan Musgrave, a senior at Beauregard High School. Laura Lee is joined by her CTE director, Dr. Sylvia Scafe. And Logan and Zoe are joined by their health science instructor and HOSA advisor, Mr. Eric Goldman, a paramedic who has been teaching at Beauregard High School for 10 years. It will be our pleasure to hear from Laura Lee and then from Zoe.
Good morning. My name is Laura Lee Farmer. I'm a student from Auburn High School. And today, I'm going to be talking about the Earn and Learn Program and what it's like working frontline in the COVID pandemic that we are currently in. The Earn and Learn Program that I'm involved in is a wonderful opportunity for high school students to get a real-life experience working in a healthcare field. It provides me with a part-time job while gaining valuable experience working in a field that I'm interested in pursuing a career in. Through this program, I'm getting hands-on experience at East Alabama Medical Center in the ER department. In just a few short weeks of being involved in the program, it has made me realize I want to major in nursing and pursue a career in emergency department. I feel I have had a unique experience with the Earn and Learn Program because of the COVID pandemic that we are currently in. I've seen firsthand the impact that COVID has had on all of us, but especially the medical field. When COVID first started, I didn't really realize how bad it impacted the medical field. You know, like I would hear the stories about how the deaths are going up. You don't really know what it's like until you're there, working frontline, and seeing it all for yourself. I've seen COVID, that I see, I have seen the strain COVID has put on the healthcare system in many different ways. We have run out of supplies. We have worked short on staff and experienced no hospital beds available because of the number of COVID patients admitted to the hospital. I've also seen the impact COVID has had on people's lives. I provided care to multiple COVID patients. I've also seen family members crying over loved ones that have been dying from COVID. I know for certain that this is what I want to do. I want to become a nurse and work with patients so that I can help them all I can and be there for them for all I can. I absolutely love it, especially the hands-on experience I have received. I've been able to provide wound care, assist with EKGs, assist with splinting, obtaining basic vital signs, conducting COVID tests, helping with triage, completing patient charts, as well as many other things. I've seen and learned a lot during my few weeks of being in Earn and Learn. I know many high schools don't get this opportunity to provide the Earn and Learn Program. So I'd like to say a big thank you to Auburn City School Systems for making this possible. I am very fortunate to be able to gain such great experience in the healthcare field and hope others will have the same opportunity as well. I would also like to thank Ms. Osborne for guiding me throughout this whole journey. She does a lot for her students, and I appreciate her being there for me. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Zoe Dollar. I'm a senior at Beauregard High School in Opelika, Alabama. I'm currently participating in the Earn and Learn Program with East Alabama Medical Center. And the experience encounters that I have been faced with have prepared me for my future career in healthcare. My goal is to become an RN and then proceed to be a PA in the future. This program has equipped me with a broad idea of hospital terminology, operations, and various positions available. I have learned skills such as toileting, turning, bathing, assistant ADLs, vital signs, and glucose monitoring. These will be essential skills for any position in healthcare to learn. Even though I may not use them daily, it allows me to appreciate and understand that it takes the entire team of staff working together to ensure the best patient care and experience. The program has always provided me with a new network and healthcare professionals that can potentially assist me with future positions that I may apply for. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Laura and Zoe. That was wonderful. Let's give them another round of applause.
Thank you. In conclusion, I would like to introduce the FFA Quartet and Chapter Officers from Tallahassee High School. They are accompanied by their instructor and mentors, Dr. Daniel Free, Jerry Cunningham, and Michael Byrd. Students, will you come forward?
Well, thank you once again for the opportunity to share. I can't stress enough just how broad and wide, you know, the CTE world is, as you can see. It's kind of ironic. We've spent a good bit of time talking about arts. And you see, we, you know, we incorporate arts even in the CTE. FFA does a great job and gives students an opportunity to share their talents in a multitude of ways, as all our CTSOs do. So again, I'd like to thank my staff for all the hard work that they do in supporting all of this that goes on across the state. Look forward to sharing more with you in the future. Have a good rest of the day. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hall.
Madam Chairman. Yes, I would like to commend Dr. Hall and this program. As a point of personal confession, 50 years ago, I started my teaching career as a CTE instructor. And subsequent to that, when I was in Pike County as assistant superintendent, the CTE program came under my purview. the CTE program came under my purview, and as a registered nurse, I can tell you, there's nothing more important than the product, the program in HOSA. My granddaughter went through that program, and she intends to go to medical school. And on the part of FFA, one of the things I learned when I was in Pike County, that FFA is more than what people perceive it as. And not only the musical program, but I learned about the FFA band program, and we had an excellent program. And the acceptance of this board and this state's support of CTE is vital. You know, we see the economic status of our na, of our state increasing, and it's to a large part because of the kind of talents that ye, these young people bring, because they spend extra time in vocational technical education, expanding their horizon, in addition to many of them getting the advanced diploma at the same time. And I certainly applaud that program, and as a fifty-year veteran of CTE, I really am grateful for the commitment and for these young people's talent. And I understand the singing, I can't do it, but I admire you for doing it. I do understand the nursing side, but God bless you all, and thank you for your commitment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? The next, do you have anything else you want to say, Dr. Mackey?
I think that's a pretty good way to conclude my report. I appreciate the singers, and I think that, we do have some officers with us, and they are planning, if, if we, or have time, they have time still to join us at the beginning of the work session if board members have any questions, too, so. They're going to, they're going to be able to stay with us, I know we want to do some pictures, but thank you all very much for bringing us a great message this morning.
Thank you all so much again. The next elementary and secondary education meeting of the Alabama State Board of Education will be held on Thursday, March tenth, 2022, at ten o'clock AM in the Gordon Persons Building Auditorium. The work session will immediately follow the board meeting in room P-103 in the Gordon Persons Building. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, show by raise hand. Opposed, we are...